I know many residents contacted us over the weekend. They were still without power. And I know consumers brought in crews from all over the Midwest to help restore power. And I know that they were working hard, too. In fact, several folks I ran into at the coffee shop who were out working on tree removal and getting power back on, and they were running on four hours of sleep. And so we just want to say thank you and how much we appreciate that. And I'll turn it over to our city manager to just give a little bit of an update. And then at our next city commission meeting, we'll have a formal update about the storm cleanup. So, city manager?
The nice part about having technology available to us is being able to leverage it in time of crisis. And so our 301-1 data became very important to us. We were able to track where calls were coming from, and we knew the concentration of where there were problems. We received over 400 calls from people requesting assistance. I'd like to acknowledge Becky Jo Glover and our deputy manager, Eric DeLonge, and Tom Almonte, because they really led an effort to try to organize and understand where the problems were. And then as well, in public services and in traffic safety, they have been out working, solving many of these problems. Now, there are many parts of the city we have yet to even get to, but we are largely done with the hardest-hit areas. There are still some areas in the extreme southeast portion of the city that we're still focused on, but we will get to you eventually across the city in every place where there was an issue. So, we're working on it, but all in all, we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, city manager. Next, two more things. I want to invite our Parks Director up to tell us about the reopening of Indian Trails, but then also to share an announcement with us this morning.
Great, thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, David Markwart, Director of Parks and Recreation. If you recall, on June 9th and June 10th, we celebrated the grand reopening of Indian Trails Golf Course, and the investment in our community down there, I think, was significant and greatly appreciated. So today, we've got some representation here with us to present to you a very large check in just a moment. But we had, I'm happy to say, nearly 100 teams golfing on Saturday, June 10th, to support our grand reopening effort and scholarship opportunity. And we had nearly 50 sponsors that came alongside of us as well to be a part of that grand reopening as well, which was significant. Today with me here, we've got three of our top-tier sponsors. We've got Angela from Experienced Grand Rapids. We have Matt and Alexis from Lake Michigan Credit Union, and Jason from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Sorry about that, Jason. I'll invite Jason up first to say just a few brief things, and others if they wish.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. There we go. Just thank you for having us here today. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan is just so excited to participate in the re-grand opening of Indian Trails Golf Course. Our commitment to the city of Grand Rapids is evident. I'm so proud of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan that we put employees here and that we're so dedicated to the health and well-being of our people of Grand Rapids. We're striving for a healthier and a happier city. So, we're glad that people of all ages, of all novice golfers to low handicap golfers will be able to utilize this golf course for many years to come. So, thank you again so much, and we're so glad to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Hi, Matt Cook with Lake Michigan Credit Union. We just want to say thank you for letting us be a part of this, and we're really excited about the redevelopment and just an important resource in the downtown area. So, we're really excited to be a part of the project and to see how it grows as we continue to see golfers come out and just different people being able to utilize the resource. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Angela, welcome.
Thank you, and good morning to everyone. On behalf of Experienced Grand Rapids, we just want to thank the Parks and Recs for inviting us to be a donor to this historic community asset and the restoration of it. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that it is also a public entity that is welcoming to all. And so, being one of the first public golf courses that really allowed access to African-Americans to play there. And so, thank you for allowing us to be a part, and congratulations, and have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela.
So with that, if I could have you, Mayor Bliss, and Commissioner Allen, and Commissioner Lanier come down in front, and if the three of you would please step forward. We have a check for over $21,000 that was raised. And this is doing no part to the contributions of these three top-tier sponsors, but also the numerous golfers that played with us on Saturday, July 10th. Thank you so much for everyone for their participation in this. This was also significant because these dollars go directly into supporting scholarships, youth scholarships for recreation across our city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all again, and thank you for coming down today. I'm going to add a couple thanks. I want to thank everyone who worked so hard on the redevelopment of Indian Trails. And then I also want to give a special thank you to our colleague, Commissioner Lanier, who led the charge in raising money to honor Commissioner Lumpkins, who has been an advocate for the golf course for a long time and was a part of the decision to reinvest in the course. So, Commissioner Lanier raised money. There will be a bench, I don't know, is that in already?
It's coming.
It's coming. So, there's a bench that was ordered with a plaque on it in honor of Commissioner Lumpkins, which will be out at the golf course. And so, again, thank you, Commissioner Lanier, for leading that. All right, with that, I will now turn it over to our city manager to introduce a new face to the executive office.
Hopefully, the face that I am about to introduce will become so popular, you will all think of him as the city of Grand Rapids. And that is, we have recently hired away from the Grand Rapids Public Library to come over here to City Hall to help us over here, a very talented person, Asante Kane. Asante has extensive experience with the city, all in the Grand Rapids Public Library. Oh, sir, we're going to have you come up here. As you can tell, he is just still learning his way around City Hall, but he's been nothing short of remarkable in the way he is picking up and already offering wise suggestions in our group meetings about how to proceed. Obviously, he's very confident in himself in that he's been here a little over two weeks, and he's going on vacation.
For good reason.
For good reason. His wife's having a baby. At any rate, Mr. Kane, we are so grateful that you decided to come to us, and I'd like to introduce you to this entire community. So, tell us about you.
Well, I am still learning the ropes. I came in, and I sat in the back, but then I realized, oh, where's Eric? So, I wrote down that note, I need to know where Eric and Greg are when I go into a room. So, my responsibility is going to be assisting Greg and Eric in whatever they need. Currently, one of the things I'm going to be working on a lot is safe, so I look forward to working with the entire commission and, of course, Commissioner Lanier on that. I'll be gone for a week or so on an adjusted schedule, but then I'll be back, ready to help you in whatever way that you need. But also to my colleagues from the library who are here, I was so happy to see them in this different kind of context. So, maybe we can just consider this a trade, so I come over here and you support them in whatever way. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And we should say thank you to the library for training you so well. Asante, we are so delighted to have you. Welcome. We all look forward to working with you, and I know that you've already started working really hard, and you've hit the ground running. So, thank you. Welcome. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to our agenda at hand and our action items. We have six of them today. We'll start with the first one. This is a resolution approving the request from 118 Fulton Operating LLC for a redevelopment liquor license to be located at 118 East Fulton Street.
So moved.
All right. Hello. Good morning.
On April 20th, 2017, 118 Fulton Operating LLC submitted an application for a new Class C redevelopment liquor license to be issued at 124 East Fulton Street, Suite 300. Additional licenses being requested at the state level will permit the sale and consumption of alcohol on Sundays, outdoor service, and an SDM license to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption. The Downtown Development Authority has granted their approval at their meeting on June 14th, 2017, and the application has also been reviewed by the required departments and is being recommended for approval.
All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to item number two, and this is a resolution approving the request from Georgina's Two LLC for redevelopment liquor license to be located at 724 Wealthy Street Southeast.
So moved.
All right.
All right, this one was submitted on March 21st, 2017. Georgina's Two LLC submitted an application for a new Class C redevelopment liquor license to be issued at 724 Wealthy Street Southeast. Additional licenses being requested at state level will permit the sale and consumption of alcohol on Sundays, as well as outdoor service. The Uptown Corridor Improvement District granted their approval at their meeting on June 7th, 2017, and the application has been also reviewed by the required departments and is being recommended for approval.
Great, thank you. All right, any questions or comments? Commissioner Allen?
Just this, that you all know that I'm a big-time foodie, and I've probably had one of the best meals I've ever eaten in my life at Georgina's in Traverse City, so I cannot wait for it to open. So, that comes with a very high recommendation from me.
All right, so we all need to go there for dinner.
And it's in the third ward.
That's true.
Money-back guarantee?
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you. All right, next that will take us to a resolution scheduling, excuse me, a special meeting of the City Commission on Monday, August 7th, this year, between 1:00 and 4:00 in Conference Room 601 of City Hall. And this will be a work session to discuss the recommendations that were submitted by the Housing Advisory Committee. Thank you so much. So, Commissioners, we, well, first, can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Thank you. So, Commissioners, during our budget process, we actually talked about having a work session dedicated to reviewing the recommendations that came out of the Housing Advisory Committee. There were 11 recommendations. We all received a pretty significant packet of information with the recommendations that came from the committee, and we, as a body, wanted to spend some time really delving into that, and also having city staff present who could answer the questions that we had. And so, I'll turn it over to Commissioner O'Connor, see if he wants to add anything.
No, we're just very excited to have gotten through the budget process and have the Affordable Housing Fund, supported by this body, to have a stable mechanism to ensure that that fund is not only established, but grows and has a good framework to appoint some members of this community to try to play our part in addressing some of the affordable housing concerns. And I think this is just the next step in looking at some of these recommendations, as well as some other city policies potentially that can have a positive impact on creating additional affordable housing units in our community.
Thank you. And Commissioners, we had talked about, so one of the recommendations in that packet that came out of that committee was to form a long-term, more permanent housing committee. So, my intent is to talk about that further at our work session on August 7th. We can decide what that body will look like and the representation necessary that we believe is necessary around that table. And then after that meeting, we can move forward with the resolution to actually create that committee, and we'll work with the city clerk on that. But I feel like we need to talk about it more, just to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just say, I look forward to, because I won't be here, actually, on the 7th, it's hard to find a date that all seven of us were here in an off-city timeframe, but I will look forward to connecting back up with you. I just want to make sure you knew that, that I wasn't skipping out on it, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll make sure that you're briefed on that, and then if you have any additional feedback. And, you know, the work session will be to work through that, but then any action items will come back before the full commission. So, all right, any other?
We tried.
We did try. And it was Commissioner Schaefer actually said, please go forward with that date, because summer is a difficult time with people's schedules. And he feels completely confident in Commissioner O'Connor to be the voice of the first.
Yeah.
I don't know. First word.
He's got it.
Just a question, after our work session, will we be taking this back to our advisory committee, then, before we actually vote on anything publicly?
You know, that wasn't my, I don't, and I guess I'll get input from Commissioner O'Connor. I don't necessarily feel like we need to. I feel like the committee did the work, made the recommendations, and now it's upon us to review those and act upon them. And then I think any additional conversations and dialogue can be with the formal housing committee, and part of that recommendation was that on that housing committee, there will be commissioners sitting around that table, and so they'll be able, that will be a space where we can have additional dialogue.
Okay, just so we hear that. Good, thank you.
Unless, Commissioner O'Connor, do you agree?
I agree completely.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next will be a resolution adopting the Granville Avenue area-specific plan as an amendment to the 2002 Grand Rapids Master Plan. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right. Is Suzanne here to speak to this? So, Commissioners, this came before us, and we adopted it. There were a couple questions about some of the recommendations that could have an implication on zoning, although I think we were really clear that we supported this plan in whole and wanted those details worked out. So, Suzanne, you want to fill us in on what is before us today?
Yeah, the item that's before you today is really a cleanup item. The resolution that we had provided didn't have enough detail in it, so we added some additional detail for the area-specific plan. So, it's pretty straightforward, but I will give you an update on the additional work that's going on since the discussion that you had as a body. We met with Neighborhood Association and Business Association and talked about displacement and ways in which to really mitigate for that. As you know, I shared with you last time, my opinion is that zoning isn't necessarily the solution for dealing with displacement. Excuse me. Because it's a transaction, but it's a land use regulation, and it doesn't really deal with buying and selling of land necessarily. And so, when we met with them, there was a lot of discussion about what can be done and using other models and looking at other places. And a lot of conversation happened around talking about lending, how lending happens in neighborhoods, as well as the real estate market and brokers, and what are those transactional pieces that lead to decision-making for people to buy or sell their homes, or don't provide opportunity for renters to own their own home that we really need to be aware of and consider. As a result of that discussion, Habitat for Humanity, Hispanic Center, Fifth Third Bank, Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association, and the Granville Business Association met and had a pretty extensive discussion, trying to think about how do we talk about lending? How do we approach realtors and have that discussion? Later this month, because of that discussion, Fifth Third Bank will have their banking mobile in the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood to provide information on lending to the community, how to build credit, and a number of other opportunities that they could provide to the community. But we believe that the work isn't done there. We actually have a meeting tomorrow where we're also including home repair services, which is tailored right around homeowners, and repairs that they need to do on their homes so that they can remain in the home, as well as Project Green from the MICA Center. Dallas Lanier has been very involved, and it really has to do with financial capacity or acuity, where people understanding, how do you build credit? What are the things that you need to do as an individual to make sure that you're in economic good standing, so that you have the ability to build equity and choice and do different things in this market? And so, we're looking to create additional partnerships and hopefully have this serve as a model for the entire city on how do you approach displacement from a market-based approach, using the resources within the community, and have that dialogue. Additional recommendations that were discussed by the City Commission included creating a new TBA B Zone District, which would allow office and residential use on the ground floor by right. We've discussed this with the Planning Commission. We have an upcoming joint meeting, as so directed by the City Commission, on August 24th, which is usually the Planning Commission's retreat, to discuss this, as well as the special land use changes that came up during your budget discussion about fees and what should be allowed by right versus special land use. That is included within that category discussion for those two bodies. We continue to evaluate the zoning language regarding multifamily in the LDR to carve out an exclusion for Granville Avenue. We feel that we can do that without making explicit modification to the entire zone district, that we could look at something much more discreet and modify in that language. We will be talking about that with the Planning Commission this month. And then also, I know there's a lot of debate about this, but one of the brainstorm ideas was considering an ordinance that seeks to balance owner and renter-occupied residential units, similar to what was done in East Lansing. We're not sure that's quite the tool, and there's a lot of debate that has to go on, but it was an idea to explore. As well as, the fifth item was develop new forms of communication with neighborhood residents. Our work with the Urban Core Collaborative and others, and how we talk about engagement and change in neighborhoods is critical. And so, even the idea of having neighborhood workshops, where when we have Planning Commission items, we have Planning Commissioners actually go with us out into the neighborhood to have a discussion, rather than just meeting in the development center. So, there's some different approaches based on identifying barriers within the community to feel like there's a control over change or input over what change happens in the community. But then also, I think the most substantive part in this right now, the work, which I'm really excited about, is this displacement piece, and how do we really tackle it in a more comprehensive way with the collaboration from existing resources within the community.
Great. All right, Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think one of the things that I see as constantly evolving and learning about is that land use sometimes is how high you can build or what you can have there, but there's so many other community aspects around that, which is kind of what you touched on here, and I think this plan, you know, talked about. Even how do you change state law for a truck route on the street, which really doesn't have anything to do so much with land use, but it does because there's surrounding land uses that are industrial that drive through there, creating a really different impact on there. So, I just want to, I guess, applaud you and whoever worked on your staff on thinking about how do we look at this differently, because our citizens really don't see it any other way. They think they come to planning, and that that impacts everything that's around them, when it's really just a law about what you can build and how high you can build it, which sometimes limits and can change your neighborhood, but it doesn't touch all the other aspects that are around what makes a neighborhood. So, I think that to really kind of key in on that through this process is probably different, takes a lot of extra work, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yeah, I too want to thank you for your work with Granville, and also thank Granville. They're not present necessarily today, but they've done a wonderful job on their ASP, and I think they're best positioned to kind of be the beta testers now for this work around displacement, which we want to hopefully continue citywide, at least in areas that are concerned about it. So, very interested in how you do that, and also that conversation about special land use and fees, because I do think, as Commissioner Schaefer said, it all depends. There are so many other factors that go into this. And as we look at our housing conversation and even other models around the country, we're seeing other cities trying to deal with this. There was a great program on PBS recently about Denver and how they're really incorporating wraparound services in their housing projects and doing mixed-in, same kind of conversation we're having. And again, that points to the need to do this regionally. So, thank you for your work on this. You're clearly hearing us and involving the people who are actually being impacted, which is most important.
Great, thank you. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll just add my thoughts. I want to say thanks for your work, and also reiterate what I think we've been saying for a long time, and that is that we know, especially with neighborhoods, one size doesn't fit all. And we've been saying for a long time, and this has actually been echoed at our neighborhood summits, and that is that we need to meet neighborhoods where they are, and we need to recognize that different neighborhoods have different needs, and we need to really be more thoughtful about making sure that we have different approaches based on the needs of a neighborhood and their desire. And that is really the essence of an ASP, right? That each area has their own plan and their own vision, and what makes them unique, and we need to honor that. So, thank you. I know it does take more work, because a one-size-fits-all approach is much easier to do, but quite frankly, it's not what's good for neighborhoods or cities. So, thank you for that.
I do have one. I have one additional question, if I may, Mayor. You know, one of the things that we keep hearing from neighbors who come to us through the neighborhood associations or even public comment here is that everybody wants nice neighborhoods and amenities, and they want the holes fixed in the sense that, you know, we've got empty parking lots and buildings that have been abandoned. We want those reused and renewed, but so much of this is an issue around ownership. And I understand that Fifth Third has an initiative, we saw them in My Biz recently, that they've got actually billions of dollars that they are putting toward these efforts around community reinvestment. Is there any conversation around the table about that with Fifth Third in terms of supporting ownership?
That has been part of the conversation. They're just starting it. They do have a grant program. They have expressed an interest in receiving an application from the Granville Neighborhood that would include a marketing campaign to kind of brand it and get people out there and build awareness in it. Not specifically, I think, I don't think the conversations have quite gotten to the full ownership piece of it yet, but how do you get people, from a banking perspective, that path to ownership? There's also been recommendations, I met with Dr. Pat Pulliam, and she also recommended several other banks, including Huntington Bank, as possibilities to explore. So, while they don't have branches in that neighborhood, because that's where the Fifth Third partnership really works well, because they have a successful bank branch in that neighborhood, I do think there are similar banking institutions that have CRA requirements, and that we could also expand that opportunity for engagement of those organizations in this dialogue.
Great. We can't do it alone. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carries. All right, next that will take us to our fifth item, and this is a resolution placing a charter amendment for a library millage proposal on the November 7th, 2017 ballot. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support. All right, Marsha, you want to tell us about this? And I know all of us, we are provided with information, some correspondence from the library, I think after your last meeting, and then all of us before us, we have this proposed, this trifles. Does everyone have that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, take it away.
Thank you. Let me first introduce the library commissioners that are in the audience today. Jim Bots, the board chair, Rachel Anderson, and Jade Vanderwald, and I believe there'll be another couple here this evening.
Great. We'll just add, real quickly, thank you all for your service. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So, following the lead of the city, the Grand Rapids Public Library is focused and committed on maintaining sustainability. We've been aware for the last several years that we are at our capacity to serve the public within our buildings, much less our work that takes the library out to the community through outreach events, programming, and digital access. This enlarges the boundaries of sustainability outside of current thinking of buildings and print collections, and we find ourselves far short of where we think we need to be. The Board of Library Commissioners have long envisioned the end of the Capitol Millage as a point at which they might expand the capacity of the current system. In light of our current asset management plan, we need to raise our budget set aside from $170,000 this year to $300,000 in 2019, and increase it at 2% annually, which would be $337,000 in 2025. Without this millage, the Library Board of Commissioners will be forced to make decisions regarding closing branches, cutting hours, or severely reducing the materials budget at just the time when new families are at just the time when new families are flocking to our community for its marvelous opportunities. The International City County Management Association, ICMA, in 2011 called on cities to use libraries as valued assets in meeting a community's strategic goals and think broadly and strategically about what libraries can accomplish. In 2017, ICMA members rated libraries as important or highly important in five key areas: access to high-speed internet, digital literacy, early childhood education, primary and secondary education, and virtual learning. We take into consideration the stated goals of the city and the mayor to align ourselves and our service plans to further the success of the city. We have increased the diversity of our staff substantially. We've hired new Spanish speakers. We've created signature Latinx and African-American programming. We've partnered with Parks and Recreation, with the public schools, with our community's children. We currently have over 200 community partnerships. We are woven into the fabric of our neighborhoods. This millage will help smooth the path to a brighter future for all of our residents. I had a couple of slides, but I don't know...
We'll have Tom help you. He's our in-house IT expert.
Thank you. If I did this more than twice every five years...
I'm on many other days.
IT expert. And he always does it with confidence.
I know.
Would they download it here?
I have paper copies.
We will take paper copies. Perfect.
I don't want to belabor these, but they just help us a little bit.
You can pass it back. You can finish. Thank you.
I think we have one of those things where you can...
This is the one?
Oh, there it is. Perfect.
Well, now you can do it old school or up front.
Get a little help from the French.
Tom, you are a jack of all trades.
I'm an IT in-house.
So, I don't want to belabor this, but the first slide is our operating revenue for the last 12 years and you can see that we're currently operating on the monies we had in 2006. Buying power, of course, has increased or decreased since then. Next is a quick tax capture slide for the same number of years and tax capture has doubled in that time. The next slide is a map of our branches and you can see, of course, the main library has the most usage, but after that, the top three has one of our branches in each of your wards. And they're actually, Ottawa and West Side switch back and forth every couple of years, but Madison is one of the small, what we call the small neighborhood libraries and it's getting the usage almost of the regional libraries. Next is our materials budget, which fluctuates based on, you know, what we've got and what we have to put money towards. The library commissioners committed when that millage was passed 20 years, 30 years ago? 23, thank you, library staff, that they would spend more than $1 million a year on materials and we're really just hovering at that 1.125 and we really would like to see some increase there, especially in digital materials. And the last slide, just for reference, shows you some comparison with the Kent District Library, our suburban donut ring. There are per capita expenses, they don't take care of their own buildings. All those buildings belong to the townships at which those branches are housed and so they don't do maintenance, they don't do cleaning, they don't do buildings. So, when they pass a millage, that all goes towards library service. So, we backed out our, the portion of our budget that we used to maintain our buildings to give a kind of apples-to-apples comparison to show that currently we're spending about $40 per person in the city and KDL 56 and with this projected millage, we would be at about $49 per person. And I know there is occasional conversation about a metropolitanization of the library system and we are always interested in working with KDL on anything that we could, but this is, to my thinking, a problem with the one-size-fits-all library system. We have a very different city and just as we would not hand over the operation of the city of Grand Rapids to the county, we would find the county system a very different-looking library system than the one we have in the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. So, Marsha, on that point though, can you, I know many of us get questions about this from constituents, can you talk about how we do partner with KDL? So, what does that look like and what are the things that we are, because I know there's a partnership and that we do work together.
Yes.
So, maybe you can just elaborate on that?
Right. So, your library card, your city library card is good at any KDL library. You can use any of their materials. You can put their materials on hold and pick it up at a KDL library. We offer each other's library cards. So, if you're a new resident of East Grand Rapids and you come downtown to the library, we will give you your KDL library card and they offer our library cards. So, we are doing, transacting about 300 or 400 library cards per month back and forth. And we, our board chair meets semi-regularly with their board chair. We are working on getting their card catalog system to work with ours. We like ours because it's open source and we don't pay any money for it and they pay about $125,000 a year for their proprietary system. So, we'd love them to look at ours and we'd be happy to help with that. So, we are continuing to move forward with services that benefit both communities.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I knew about a lot of those, but I think it's good for the public to know that as well. So, thank you. Questions? Commissioners? Commissioner Kelly, then Commissioners Lanier?
I just want to underscore that this is not a tax increase. This is just a shift in the use of resources to better serve the public. I think that's going to be a question we'll get and I wish it could be actually written in the ballot language, but I'm sure you'll get that message out and we will try to support that as well.
Commissioner?
Yes. Thanks, Marsha, for being here and the board and staff members. We are active members in our households. We are very grateful for the library and what it offers and probably we're subsidizing some of this with our late fees that we continue to... I'm sure. But thank you so much.
These are not public.
But thank you so much for your partnerships with the schools. We really enjoy the book that you have each year and sharing those and I know other colleagues enjoy those as well. I am curious to Commissioner Kelly's point. My question really was about why we're not calling it something like renewal or something like that so that it can educate the public. So, if you can help us to understand that because it isn't new, it's a change.
We would have loved to call it a renewal. We tried to call it a continuation, but our legal counsel here at the city and outside legal counsel both said because it's no longer a capital bond millage, it is not the same. So, we will, in our information, make sure that we emphasize that it is not an increase in taxes, but we were unable to legally call it a continuation or a renewal.
So, the piece that it's not an increase is explicit, but the piece that we already have something and now we're going to use what we have to do this, isn't.
Okay.
And so, I don't know city attorney, how they can go about doing that and I think that's really important because most people are tired of taxes and, or tax fatigue is probably a better way of saying that. And so, I think to make sure that it's clear, I see Elizabeth, are you coming forward to help with that? I think it would just help the public to fully understand that and I understand the legality of it, but what are some creative ways of saying more than just this isn't an increase?
Right. You're correct, Commissioner. The current capital improvement millage in this very same amount is currently being levied. That expires July 2017 in this month. This millage will begin July 2018 and is for purposes different from the capital. So, we explored the idea of trying to phrase it as a continuation or as a renewal, which from a fiscal standpoint, it is a continuation of the same assessment. But in order to have the Attorney General's approval on this language, which we were able to secure, that could be part of the educational process and the promotion process, but in the ballot language, to accurately state what this is, it's not technically a continuation of the same millage and it's not technically a renewal because it's not the capital bond millage.
And because the current ends this year and this won't start until next year, there's a whole year in between.
Correct.
So, that gap is contributing a little bit to...
Correct. The year, the taxes will be collected for this fiscal year and may be allocated to the library, but this millage will begin for the next year.
Next year. Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to kind of go back and think just broadly about this because I know that why there's a separate library board from what we have is just based on the fact of what we see and we saw it six years ago, is that when cities' general revenue faces tough times, we have to cut back on things. And so, when you look at things that we used to own, museum, zoo millage, which just passed, you know, the county had operated that for a while, the not-for-profit libraries, they really look at it having a more specialized function that they have. So, existing within a general fund with core services that the city does is really not a good spot for them. And so, I think what we've said and what we've done, and I think we're seeing what just passed with the zoo and the museum vote, is that you ask voters, do you want this specialized service that's non-core, but that is in a way essential and amenity that really says, do you have a thriving city or not? Do you have a place for people can go and learn on their own or really educate themselves? And so, that's what the library does. And so, I think asking voters if they want that service is just a basic thing of what our role is here is to serve up that option. And so, I think what we're doing today is simply voting to say, do you want to continue what you have here? And I think that what's nice about the chart that you see there is you can see how that, just to provide library service, if you were to, you know, consolidate, sometimes you save money and sometimes you don't. So, while we can look down that road and try and save more than we have, there's a core operating function that costs a certain amount of money to have. And so, I think ultimately, that's why I really support this now because I do support elaborate system. I think it's very important to have. And in order to do that and to fund that, I don't think that we can fund that out of a general fund dollars. In fact, we had to support some of that because in essence, we created that problem by giving Roundfield tax credits that took that value of taxable value that they could have back. So, we in essence, right-sized that and they've done a really good job over the past few years of looking at their budget and finding those spots to create those efficiencies. So, and just wanted to state that from kind of a historical perspective, I think this is the right way in which to fund libraries.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carries. Thank you for your... You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your work. All right, next Commissioners, that will take us to our last item before us and this is a discussion regarding the Property Assess Clean Energy Year, also called PACE. And so, this is not an action item, it's just a discussion and an update. Let me see, I have aired along before us to talk about this, but I'll give you a little update. This has been a conversation that I've been a part of. I think all of you know, we meet monthly with the urban mayors and managers, so our surrounding mayors and managers from Kentwood, Walker, Wyoming, East, and Granville, we get together and we talk about local issues and things we're working on together and this has been a topic of conversation around that table. But also, it really came about because of this opportunity for a new tool that can be used for energy efficiency, water efficiency, renewable energy, and we at the city can play a role in making that tool available to our community. So, I'll turn it over to Eric to kind of go through what this is and brief all of us so that we're familiar with what this is and what we potentially can do.
So, thank you, Mayor. That's a very good summary. We are working with our neighboring communities and Wyoming has preceded us and has already enabled this tool to be used in the city of Wyoming. And we're using that pattern here and we'll also use it in our other urban metro mayor cities along the metro mayor manager cities throughout the region. So, it's consistent with other things we're doing, our sustainability plan, our transformation plan, and also the 2030 district and other energy activities that we have going on. I've been working also with Amy Snow Buckner, Asante Kane, and Scott Smith, who's here today, to answer any questions you might have and all three of them can help in this effort. And you'll see them on the 25th when we introduce the follow-on items. So, PACE is really about finding a way to have commercial properties do energy efficiency. Lots of times, there's a disconnect between financing mechanisms and time for payback on an energy improvement. And so, this allows very long-term financing and also provides assurance of collection by doing a special assessment district for the parcel that's involved. So, the city would be involved as a medium of collection and all the financing would be done in the private sector and there would be no dollars from the city involved in terms of providing financing. So, the financing could go over a period that it could extend, I think, at the 20 years, 25 years and would be at an interest rate negotiated in the private sector and our role would be to create the district and then collect the funds and make sure it's paid. Also, what this does is help with security for the lender because as it is a special assessment, it has the rule, it has the ability to be a lien on the property as well. So, the types of projects that could be done are relamping, relighting the windows like we did in our building would be, could have been an eligible expense if we'd been a private sector entity. So, anything that's going to reduce the cost of occupancy of a building by energy improvements could be doing it. You assure that by having a licensed and professional do energy audits and certify that these, actually these improvements are going to produce those results. And so, the idea is that the savings in the energy, in energy savings, pay the amount of the loan back to the lender. So, it's something that we're now getting interested in. It's been on the books for a while. It's been slow to be implemented in Michigan, but there are several entities that have now done it in Michigan and we're happy to be at this point where we can introduce it here because we do have interest about projects within the city of Grand Rapids. So, with that, the team can take any questions and, oh, I should tell you too, the schedule. So, we intend to request you to establish a public hearing on the 25th, a resolution. That hearing would take place on August 15th and if all goes well, we could adopt our program on the 22nd.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
This is a program that I'm very familiar with. In fact, I've tried to bring it to fruition even before I became a city commissioner. So, this is long overdue, so I'm happy to see it finally come before this body. I want to strongly encourage the city staff and the folks that are working on this, when you establish the districts, to make sure it's not limited to just downtown or to industrial. There are some really creative ways that PACE is being used to create affordable housing and I know for a fact, there are some developers now looking to implement some of these models in some of our neighborhood business districts. A lot of our zoning requires retail on the main floor with residential above. There's ways that PACE can be used to extremely lower the occupancy cost for the folks because you do heat recovery systems and there's some really elaborate things that you can do. So, then when folks are renting those apartments, it's one price. Your rent includes utilities, includes everything and it's much lower than it would be. It lowers the cost of living significantly in these units. So, make sure, and I'm thinking in terms of South Town and the various corridors that we're working on are perfect opportunities for PACE to be implemented with these, you know, there's the Boston Square neighborhood, there's the Franklin Eastern neighborhood, there's the Seymour Square neighborhood where PACE would be a huge advantage for developers, a huge incentive for developers to look at some of those to develop some affordable housing along with the commercials. So, I'm glad to see it. I fully understand it. I fully embrace it and I hope that the commission does as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I will say, and Eric probably will add to this, absolutely it would be available for neighborhoods and I think... it would be available for neighborhoods, and I think all of us see the opportunity, even as we've talked about water conservation and knowing that and the high cost of utility, this could really be utilized in a way to reduce overall cost of living as well as reduce water usage, because we know that it costs money to move to low flow and to energy-efficiency appliances, and so this could be used. And we've had some success in the past with better building, and we know that program doesn't exist anymore, but this could really be used to incent some of those changes.
I just want to affirm that it will be available citywide, so thank you.
Yeah, and maybe, kind of helped me through, I understand what's attached here is in draft form, what we have, but when I read through what the Act allows to do and what's kind of being proposed here, is that we're not saying it's using city bonding and city debt, but that's allowed in the Act, right?
It is.
So is it a tax credit, then, that we're giving, or what's the funding mechanism for? Because I see going out and getting other financing for it, which makes sense, but what's the benefit and why is the city back and involved with it?
We're involved because of the virtue of the special assessment process. So as a lender, you want some security that you're going to get paid, and this is probably the ultimate security for a lender.
So we actually, okay, I see. So it's, what we're just doing is we're just collecting payment, in essence, and...
What we're doing is we're making sure that...
Processing payment.
We're the convener, the connector. So you've got a project, you've got a lender, comes together in a contract, then it becomes a special assessment.
Gotcha. And then there's a fee that covers our cost to do that, that is baked in there, or are we waiving that? Is that...
No, we're not waiving. We have a modest fee of $250 for the application.
Okay. So we are kind of waiving.
And then, we, like, it's origination fee, you know. So, and then we have, there's also a clause, we can collect costs. So we'll have to figure out what our costs of collection are, and we might be able to assess those as well. But I think the burden that we might add to the deal flow is going to be real, real small.
Yeah. And Commissioner, we're really hoping that in partnership with other cities, that we'll be able to come up with a really streamlined process. We don't want this to be cumbersome, we don't want it to be difficult. We really want it to be a tool that is easy to use and that will truly incent people to look at energy efficiency and upgrades. And so we've talked about that with our partner cities, is learning from each other and figuring out a way to make sure that this truly is an easy process.
Then the only thing I'd say that would be helpful from the banking side is just a legal opinion, which I think is in here, and others has done it, that shows how collectible it is off of it. Because I think the value, I'm understanding what you're saying, now the value is, I don't need to derive extra value in the building itself or have excess equity in my building for me to grab, because this is, the collateral is the fact that the payment resource is the city's collecting it, which they can levy just like a tax. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. I think that's one of the advantages, but Scott Smith could explain more if you'd like him to.
Yeah, but not a tax. I think we need to be careful not to use the word.
We can collect on it, just as we could, in essence.
Yeah.
Right. I'm just thinking through with my other...
Special assessment.
Yeah. My other hat on, what's the benefit to doing this?
It becomes a lien on the property.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
I'll go to Commissioner Kelly, and then I don't know, Scott, if you want to add anything on that legal aspect. I know you've been working on this with the city, but I'll turn to my colleagues for additional questions, and then you can answer them.
Yeah, I had a question about the administration fee that that got answered. Wondering how we will promote it and to, will this also benefit the small landlord, for example, if you've got a two-family and it's still commercial property, so will they be able to apply?
I don't know about small landowners. That's a good question. But I think there are two tiers of projects. There's a tier that's above $250,000, where you have to have more, $250,000 of value in the project, where you have to have additional certifications, and there's a lower barrier for smaller projects. So I think we want to deal with small projects if we can. That might be a Scott question, too.
Okay.
Scott, you just got invited to the table. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, Scott, thanks for being here. Thank you for your work on this.
So the way it works is it's a single-lot special assessment, essentially, so, and it's a special assessment by contract involving the city, the lender, and the property owner. So you'll see a three-party agreement, a sample of that in there. It's not our sample, it's what Lean and Green Michigan put together, but that's how that would work. It's a consensual special assessment, and the benefit of that, Commissioner Schaefer, is that as a special assessment, it'll take priority over any other liens, so you can't have any better security than that special assessment gives in that sort of situation. And yes, it's adaptable to projects of all sizes theoretically, assuming you can find a lender to lend the money.
And there are energy savings.
And there are energy, well, there have to be some energy savings and energy efficiencies.
And Eric, going back, and I know Asante's been working on this as well, and I don't know if we've even gotten to this point yet, if we move forward on this and adopt it, will we be thinking about bringing together potentially a coalition of lenders to work with us to promote this program throughout the city, so that people, one, know about it, and then, two, actually utilize it?
Well, once, yes, once we get up and running, first, we have to have the program in place, and once we get up and running, though, I think that there are many lenders here who would do it. There are also, Mr. Levin has private placement capacities, and there may be other private placement capacities or facilities that we could use as well. So we'll promote it through the Energy District, through Sustainable Business Forum and other ways.
Great. And Commissioners, if you don't know Andy Levin, he is with, what's his company called again?
Lean and Green Michigan.
Lean and Green Michigan, thank you. And he's been working with a number of cities to get this program off the ground.
Yeah, right now, he's the, has done most of the deals within Michigan. So we think that, so that's a good way to start. He's experienced and actually helped design the program, but eventually, we may, as the mayor has said, we may develop our own capacity, and so we may be able to be more involved in the deal and maybe have, that might make us more flexible. So we'll look at that, too, as we evolve.
Yeah. Thank you. Other questions or comments? So I want to say thank you to Asante, Eric, Amy, Scott, for working on this. Commissioners, I really see this as aligned with our goals. I mean, clearly, we have some really bold goals around environmental sustainability here at the city, but we also do as a community as well, and we have a lot of community partners working on that, whether it's our partners with the 2030 district or others in the community working towards being a green city. And this, again, will provide another tool for community members to use to help us get there.
Thank you. So we'll continue the process then on the 25th.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. So we'll expect that back on July 25th. If you have additional questions, please reach out to Eric, and he can get you the information that you need. All right, Commissioners, we have no executive sessions today, but we do have Economic Development Project Team at 12:30 in Room 601. I will be joining the meeting a little bit late, only because I am participating on a panel discussion. So Commissioners, if you can go ahead and get started without me, and then I'll join you. There is one item I want to make sure that I'm present for, so I'll let you know about that, and maybe it can be moved until I get there. So, all right. With that, we are adjourned, and I will see you all back here tonight at 7:00 PM for our evening meeting.